Call to order, City Forest Park Council Meeting Number 1247, March 16, 2015. Let us stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Clerk call a roll, please.
Burns.
Here.
Cottle.
Here.
Herbie.
Here.
Holt.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lives.
Here.
Sethon.
Here.
All council members are present. Item number two, minutes. You received the minutes from the last meeting. Are there any corrections or changes in the minutes? Hearing non-minutes will stand approved as presented. Item number three is a presentation, Mr. Brim, Business of the Month.
Mayor members of council, thank you very much. It's that time of the year, spring's coming, I hope, and hopefully we can say goodbye to snow shoveling and hello to lawn care. Our March Business of the Month can help you get your lawn in shape and keep it that way throughout the entire summer and fall. M&amp;H Lawn Care and Manicure is a locally owned and operated lawn care company that provides superior but affordable services to help local businesses and residents alike. From spring planting to fall cleanup, M&amp;H can take care of it for you. Their expert staff is uniformed and professional, and they pride themselves on being courteous and knowledgeable, which helps to enhance each customer's experience. As I said, M&amp;H provides services for both commercial and residential customers. Commercial property owners, of course, need to make a good first impression. M&amp;H can help them shine by maintaining the current landscape, refurbishing the old, or even helping to create a new one. The company offers special programs for our residents as well. For example, M&amp;H provides discounted services for elderly adults. They also offer vacation services to homeowners who do not worry about their lawns while they're out of town. That would be me. This service also allows for the security of the property by appearing to be occupied even while you're away on vacation. Theirs is a professional and customer service-oriented company that takes the time to find out and address each individual's unique needs. Their services include lawn cutting and edging, bush and shrub shaping, mulching, full-scale landscaping, including plant selection, hardscape design and installation, leaf removal, snow removal, weeding, mulching, aeration, thatching, and services for distressed properties. The last one's kind of interesting because they've actually helped us on a number of properties here in the area that have even been foreclosed on or vacant, commercial and residential. This company has actually helped us. As a matter of fact, it was our community development director, Chris Anderson, who nominated the company because of the work they do with the city. So if you're looking at your yard and trying to decide how best to prepare for our annual yard beautification contest, contact professionals at M&amp;H now. They can help you create an award-winning landscape you'll be proud of. We're proud to recognize this company as our March Business of the Month. The owner, Maisha Clark, apparently couldn't join us this evening, so I will make sure that she receives this award. I know her and Rob that work with her at the company do an excellent job. I can vouch for them myself because it's why I got a yard beautification award last year, and anyone who knows me knows it wasn't because of my expertise. So with that, I will make sure to get this.
Thank you, Paul. And Paul, would you add, or the people outside, to let them know they can come on in? Okay, we'll go to our item number four, communication from the public. This is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions or concerns to them. Recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your questions or comments. Council meetings are taped recording for ease of transcriptions. Comments are limited to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the public? I see we have our sheriff here tonight, Sheriff Neil, if you'd like to address the council and speak to us. So just come on up, or you just... I don't know who you are, who you and your guests are.
It's my sidekick. I have G-Paul duties. But it's an honor to be back in Forest Park. We're working very hard in the sheriff's office to bring the best service that we can to everybody in Hamilton County. And just so that, in case you're not aware, oh, we're fine. In case you're not aware, we're also helping out another community in crisis. Arlington Heights is down to a police chief and two police officers. So the sheriff's office is helping them out on the second half of the day because they're on 12-hour shifts like we are. So they're working the first 12 hours of a day, and we're working the second 12 hours. But again, that is my responsibility of the sheriff. When an area has their own policing, it doesn't relieve me of my responsibilities to the communities in Hamilton County, and that's what we're here for. But again, it's a pleasure to be here, and thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Sheriff, just before you go, does anybody have any questions of the sheriff or any comments? Sheriff, you mentioned Arlington Heights. I know that from what I've seen in the papers, I guess you're also policing in Lincoln Heights and Silverton. Are there other places that you're...
No, but we've talked to other communities. What we are doing, though, as well, is we're participating in a number of task forces that are benefiting everybody in Hamilton County. We have a violence crimes task force made up of sheriff's deputies, Cincinnati police officers, BCI, the State Attorney General's Office, the FBI, Lachlan, Woodlawn. And to date, we've been in existence as task force for about one year, and to date, we closed 15 homicides. Three of them were cold cases, and one was a murder-for-hire. And they're still very active. We just, I've just embedded a couple of my computer investigators in with the FBI task force to go after child predators. And we're also working with other local law enforcement and state law enforcement to put together a heroin coalition to address, from our end, working with other human service agencies, obviously, but Ellie is getting together to do what we can to make a difference with this heroin epidemic. So that's another coalition that's going to be kicking off soon.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, did you want to address council, or are you just visiting? Thank you. Hearing non-what else from the public, next item on the agenda is reports standing committed. The first of those would be Councilwoman Holt, Human Resources.
Hi, I do not have a report for Human Resource, but I just want to say, as the liaison for the Beautification Commission, we will be meeting on this coming Wednesday night at 6:30. We do have some openings on that commission if you would like to join us and see what we're all about, and especially since it's coming around to the planting season, and we're gearing up for that also. So the meeting will be Wednesday night, this coming Wednesday night, 3:18 at 6:30, up on the third floor. If you're interested in joining us or just want to come and sit in to see what we're all about, we'll be happy to have you. With that being said, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Councilwoman Holt? Hearing non-Councilwoman Holt, I have no items on the agenda for you for the work session on the 23rd. Do you have any to add?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Next committee report would be Public Improvement and Facilities, Councilman Southall.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I do not have a report for public improvement and facilities, but I would like to reiterate an announcement that I made at the last council meeting about the Gospel Fest, which is Saturday, the 21st, at 6:00 p.m. at Day Springs Church. That would end my report, an announcement as it is. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to field them.
I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Southall, I would like, if you don't mind, checking something out for me. There was a very serious complaint about the Activity Center on an event, I think it was like 2:22. Can you look into that for me, please?
Uh, excuse me.
Are you familiar with it?
I'm not familiar with what you're saying at the moment, but after the meeting, I'll get with you, and I will be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else for Mr. Southall? Seeing nothing, Mr. Southall, I have one item on the agenda for you for the work session, Kemper Meadow Stormwater Project. Do you have anything to add?
No, I do not at this time, sir. Thank you.
Next committee is Public Safety, Mr. Lives.
Thank you, mayor. I first wanted to, as usual, highlight an item from our departmental reports, which I try and do from at least the public safety aspect. And this week, it is. He guessed it right. It's great. I like it. Thanks for coming, by the way. It's Poison Prevention Week, March 15 through the 21st, and I was amazed that there are more than 2 million poisonings each year reported to the poison control centers. And 90% of these occur in the home. The majority of them are children under six years old. I had a personal experience with this, where my granddaughter got into my high blood pressure medication, and sadly, it was in a container that didn't, that could be opened. But fortunately, after a trip to Children's Hospital and their intervention, everything was all right. But it could have been, it turns out that a drug that helps one person can harm a smaller person, so I think we all need to look at that and where we store these things. Also, I wanted to report from the Police Division that I attended their award and recognition meeting on March 8th. It was extremely impressive and made me and it would make anybody in the community sleep a lot easier to see what our police are doing and the incredible amount of service that is being given. I think the American verify better than I can how many guns they confiscated, which in alone was over 30. There were a number of other patrol actions, things that the citizens just don't see on a daily basis. But we can be well assured that our police force is outstanding and is doing an outstanding job. And that would end my report, sir.
Questions for Mr. Lives? Hearing non-councilman Lives, I have one item on the agenda for you, appointment to CPB Board. Do you have any to add?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Next committee reports, Ways and Means, Councilwoman Herbie.
Yes, I just want to piggyback on what Councilwoman Lives had talked about. In our departmental reports, we also receive incident reports, and it's very interesting to read through those and to see how many police incidents we have, which are successfully taken care of by our police. So yes, I want to echo what he says about our police force being really outstanding. In terms of business economic development issues, we're currently working with Ameritas to, on a ribbon-cutting ceremony, to celebrate the completion of their reconfiguration of their regional headquarters sometime at the end of April. Also, they also want to celebrate this with the community, and they are also working with us to help organize a Community Family Fun Day, which would be a free event, open to the public at Central Park on Saturday, May 2nd. The plans are very tentative, but we're looking at the afternoon from approximately 2:30 to 5:30. And again, these are tentative plans, but they're also talking about including a classic car show, family-oriented activities and musical entertainment, and presentations by the Cincinnati Zoo, and also foods and refreshments with proceeds going to a local charity. At the same time, unfortunately, we have to say that due to their, the demolition of their building on their traditional site, the Concert on the Green for this year has been canceled. And we know this has been a fantastic event for 25 years, but we can't really guarantee the availability of that site for this year's event. And in the environmental awareness issues, there is a Forest, actually, I think this is being done by Hamilton County in Forest Park. It's a composting and rain barrel seminar on Wednesday, March 6th, from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. At the end of the hour, there'll be information presented at the end of the hour. All of the attendees will receive a free kitchen collector, a sample guide to composting in your backyard booklet, and a I heart compost magnet. Plus, Green Hills and Forest Park residents will have the opportunity to order composting bins and/or rain barrels at a 75% discount. There's no charge to participate, but because supplies and seats are limited, we asked you to register today on the Hamilton County website for the Forest Park date. And this is the only location at which there will be offers of discounted compost bins and rain barrels. So this would take place at the senior center, so I encourage you to go online and register. Thank you.
Questions for Councilwoman Herbie? Hearing non-councilwoman Herbie, I have three items for you for the work session. The first one is T-I-R-C. The second one is Gwen Gilmore Study. And the third one is cardiac monitor. Do you have any to add?
Uh, no.
Okay. Next committee report is Community Development Committee, Mr. Burns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no report this evening. However, if there are any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Questions for Mr. Burns? Hearing non-Mr. Burns, I don't have any items for you. Do you have any to add?
No, thank you.
Next committee report is Law Committee, Councilwoman Cottle.
Yes, it was an honor to attend the Forest Park Police Department and Recognition meeting. And also, I wanted the residents to know that they can go on the Forest Park website line and look at, look at a section that they can go to, and they can do their Forest Park City taxes online if they don't want to fill out the paperwork. So just wanted to encourage people to do that online if they prefer. And that would conclude my report. Thank you.
Any questions for Councilwoman Cottle? Hearing non-councilwoman Cottle, I have one item on the agenda for you for the work session. It's a liquor license request. Do you have any to add?
No, thank you.
The next report is Internal Governmental Relations and Communication. That's my committee. The only report that I would have would be for Mayor's Court. Mayor's Court clerk is in the process of winding up her records, update purge. She's put an awful lot of time in it, and the results of it is clearing away, clearing away space for storage, as well as saving us money for off-site storage. That would conclude my report there. I would answer any questions if there are any. Item six, the mayor's report. I just want to report that on last Sunday, I did attend the Police Department's Awards Recognition Ceremony. As has been stated already, it was a very great event, as it is always. I would, I want to reiterate to those young men and women, the total support that they have from council. As Councilman Lives mentioned, over this past year, I think there was a total of 83 officer-involved gun confiscations that totaled, I believe, 30 to 40 guns that were taken in the course of these young people, these people doing their duties. Beyond that, as was also stated, I wish that every member of the public would have an opportunity to actually sit down and talk with one of our officers, to get to know them as people, to find out what it is that they actually do, and all of the good that they do. Unfortunately, in this day and age, as I said to our officers the other night, we hear so many negative things about police nationally, not just locally, but around the country. These people want to be able to go home to their families when their shifts are over, just like anybody else. Unfortunately, the media recently, in the last 18 months or year, have made it a habit of reversing the Constitution in that when it comes to police, it's when there's an issue, the police are guilty until they prove themselves innocent. That's not what the law says. That's not how it's supposed to be. And I just want everybody out there, especially our police and our citizens, to understand and to know. As far as I am concerned, we will adhere to the law. If there's an issue with our police department, individual policemen, police officers, or police employees, the same law that will apply to any citizen will apply to them, and that is, they will be considered innocent until they are proven guilty. And that would conclude my report. I will answer any questions if there are any. Hearing non, we move to item number seven, the City Manager's Report. Mr. Hodges.
Thank you. I'll report three things. First of all, our Finance Director is scheduled for some surgery, and that is going to probably take at least three months for her to fully recover. We don't know the exact timing, but the point being, she will be out for a period of time. And because of that, I will probably take some action to assign her duties to the Deputy Director officially. Right now, he's pretty much covering those duties, but I think we're going to formalize that, given the fact that it's going to be an extended period of time that the Finance Director is going to be out. So I'd mention that in case you have any communications or need any information, you realize that we're going to be running short staff at the top end, but I'm confident that we'll be able to get the job done during that timeframe. Of course, we wish the Finance Director the best in her upcoming surgery. I also want to report that the annual report and the State of the City report has been completed. We have provided that to City Council electronically, and it will be available for the general public on our website. And then finally, I'll report that the departmental reports have all been completed, they've been included in the council packet, and they've also been placed on file with Clerk for Council for a public inspection. So that would conclude my report, but I would respond to any questions, if there are any.
Any questions for the City Manager? Hearing non, thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda, item eight, other reports, the first of those being the Law Director, Mr. Wyckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since the last meeting, I did submit an opinion, actually, in two separate forms, to the City Manager, and I'm sure Mr. Hodges is sharing it with all of you, regarding campaign activities related to non-partisan election, that being the fire levy. If anybody has any follow-up questions regarding that, I'd be happy to answer. Otherwise, that would be end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the Law Director? Hearing non, we'll go to the next report, Clerk for Council, Mrs. Hoffman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that Resolution Number 09-2015 through 11-2015 were posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Clerk of Council? Hearing non, thank you, Ms. Hoffman. We'll go to item number nine. There's a motion, Mr. Lives.
Thank you. I move to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read for the second time by title only, Ordinance Number 02-2015. This ordinance was read for the first time by title only on March 2nd, 2015.
Second.
We move to second that we suspend the rules requiring reading in full on two separate days and read for the second time by title only, Ordinance Number 2002-2015. Any discussions? Hearing non, although, would Clerk call a roll under motion?
Burns.
Yes.
Cottle.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lives.
Yes.
Sethon.
Yes.
The motion to suspend the rules passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, item A, Ordinance Number 02-2015. Would Clerk please read that by title only?
Ordinance Number 02-2015, and Ordinance Amending Chapter 73, Stopping and Parking of the Cultified Ordinances of the City of Forest Park.
Is there a motion? Mr. Burns.
Yes, I move for the adoption of Ordinance Number 02-2015.
We move to second that we adopt Ordinance 02-2015. Is there a discussion, Mr. Burns?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As stated earlier, this ordinance was read by title only on the, on the March 2nd meeting. This ordinance has to do with the refining of our parking regulations to prohibit the parking of vehicles sideways across driveway aprons. In other words, parallel parking across the driveway apron. Overall, this has been a relatively small, yet ongoing, community standards issue, where one or more residents simply park across the grass and up onto the short driveway apron and park their cars sideways. This parking behavior is not only annoying to neighbors, but it also ruts the right-of-way near the apron where the wheels of the vehicle may have crossed. Neighbors have complained on this issue, that it looks bad to the neighborhood and should be brought to an end. A review of the codes indicates that we don't have a specific item in our ordinance to address this type of sideways apron parking. The essence of the amendment would effectively prohibit parking on the driveway aprons that are simply too short to support the length of a vehicle, and under no circumstances will vehicles be allowed to park sideways, with an exception being during declared snow emergencies. And with that, I would urge the adoption of Ordinance 02-2015.
Any further discussion? Hearing non, Clerk call a roll under ordinance.
Cottle.
Yes.
Herbie.
Yes.
Holt.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lives.
Yes.
Sethon.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Ordinance Number 02-2015 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is item 10, the new business item, Resolution Number 12-2015. Would the Clerk please read this resolution in total?
Resolution Number 12-2015, a resolution authorizing and directing the City Manager to negotiate and execute insurance coverage with the Ohio Plan for insurance that includes but is not limited to property casualty and liability. Whereas it is desirable to purchase insurance coverage for areas of city services, and whereas the City Administration contacted with, contracted with the Highland Group Cincinnati under Resolution 1-2012 to solicit and review proposals for various insurance that includes but is not limited to property, building, and contents, electric data processing, contractors' equipment, general floater, fire department, commercial general liability, Ohio employers' liability, automobile liability, and physical damage, crime, employee dishonesty, law enforcement liability, public officials' liability, EMS, fire department errors and omissions, excess liability and related insurance. And whereas Highland Group Cincinnati received and evaluated proposals from HCC Houston Casualty, Argonaut, Trident, and the Ohio Plan. And whereas Highland Group Cincinnati Consultants and the City Administration agree that the proposal submitted by the Ohio Plan is the best one to meet the city's specifications and requirements, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the City of Forest Park, Ohio. Section 1, that the proposals, HCC, Houston Casualty, Argonaut, Trident, and the Ohio Plan were competitive, and that after considerable review and deliberation of the proposals, it was determined that the current needs and security of the City of Forest Park could best be met with the insurance coverage as listed in the proposal submitted by the Ohio Plan. Section 2, that the City Manager is hereby authorized and directed to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Plan for the provision of insurance coverage for a total fee of approximately $93,164 annually. The City Manager is hereby further authorized to modify or add additional insurance coverage within the amount Council has appropriated or otherwise made available through other line items for insurance purposes in order to maintain and protect the insurable interest of the, interest of the City of Forest Park, its property, employee, and agents. Section 3, this resolution shall be in full force and effect on its passage.
Any discussion, Councilwoman Herbie?
Let me hit through motion first.
I'm sorry.
I move adoption of Resolution Number 12-2015.
Second.
We move to second that we adopt Resolution Number 12-2015. Now, is there any discussion?
On March 2nd of this year, we, sealed bids were received and opened for our property casualty and liability insurance. There were three bids, of which Highland's Ohio Plan was the lowest. There were three bids, of which Highland's Ohio Plan was the lowest. We completed our review and analysis of the bids with our consultant, Adams Ball and his teams, and the process we used this year to receive proposals is the same as we have used in last year, in previous years. We are choosing to recommend going with Highland's Ohio Plan for $93,165. This is roughly the coverage cost. However, that could change depending on changes in deductibles, increase in the limits in certain areas of liability. It might change because throughout the year, our insurables may change. For example, we might replace vehicles in our inventory or purchase new iPads that we didn't have when the insurance was quoted. We are nearing the end of our three-year renewable arrangement with this same company that we've used in the past, and we say three years, they are quoted as a one-year with two-year renewable options, and that may depend on our claims history. But based on the review, I would recommend that we adopt this resolution.
Any further discussions? Hearing none, would the Clerk call a roll on Resolution 12-2015?
Herbie?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lives?
Yes.
Southall?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Cottle?
Yes.
Resolution 12-2015 passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda, item B, is a motion. Councilwoman Herbie?
Yes, I would move to receive the General Fund Summary Report as contained in the departmental reports.
Second.
The move in second, that we receive the General Fund Summary Report as contained in the departmental reports. Is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, let it be known by the sign of voting, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Is there any other business to come before the council? Any other business to come before the body? Hearing none. This council meeting is adjourned.